I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll notice some new makeup. Since Cant is no longer on the board, I'm the vice president. I'll be running the meeting this evening. And we have our newest board member, Nan Baker here, and Todd Tulkey unfortunately came down with food poisoning, so he is not here this evening. So that is what's going on tonight. And Dr. Maher is out of town at some national meetings for superintendent. So we have Dr. Boyson replacing him. I would ask now the business manager to issue the oath of office to the newly elected members. Carly Inack.
Carly Ryder, at a regular meeting, the school board held on Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, the school board declared you were a duly elected member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5. South Dakota law 131814 provides that newly elected members of the school board shall qualify and assume their office at the annual meeting of the school board in July by taking and subscribing to an oath or affirmation to support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and faithfully perform the duties of school board membership. Carly Ryder, will you please state the oath?
I, Carly R. Ryder, having been elected to the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5 of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of school board membership.
Thank you. Would you please sign the oath? Two copies, one for our records and then one for yours. Oops, thank you. Thank you. Nan Baker, at a regular meeting, the school board held on Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, the school board declared you were a duly elected member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5. Section 13814 of South Dakota law provides that newly elected members of the school board shall qualify and assume their office at the annual meeting of the school board in July by taking and subscribing to an oath or affirmation to support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership. Nan Baker, would you please subscribe to the oath?
I, Nan Baker, having been elected to the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5 of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the school board membership.
I get you to sign the two of these, and we'll have one for you and one for keeping on our records. Thank you. Welcome to the school board.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, approval of June payroll in the amount of $13,1538.95 and claim vendors in the amount of $21,579.83515. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. The motion carries. Item number five, supplemental consent agenda approval claims to Sanford in the amount of $8. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who do not approve, same sign. That passes with two and two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. Now we move on to organization of the school board, and Todd Bieck, business manager, will assume chair.
Thank you. I'd now entertain nominations for president of the school board.
I'd like to nominate Cynthia Mickelson.
Second.
You have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Those in favor of Mickelson, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four nothing.
Okay, I can take over now, right?
You're in charge again.
So, thank you all, and I look forward to serving as your president. Now we'll move on to the election of vice president for the school board.
I nominate Carly Ryder for vice president.
I second. So we have a first and a second. Any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none. All those in favor for Carly Ryder for vice president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, same sign. Motion carries for Carly Ryder as vice president. Now we move on to the motion for payment of school board members.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, a motion for the designation of bank depositories for the funds of the school district.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Item E, for establishing the second and fourth Monday of each month at 5:30 PM as a regular meeting day to the school board.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Motion carries. Now, motion F, designating the Sioux Falls Artist Leader as the official newspaper for our legal publications. All those, do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Motion G, Board of Sioux Falls School District to be membership in the Associated School Boards of South Dakota.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. H, this is having a delegate assembly to the Associated School Boards, which will appoint at, when we do our committees at a later time, but this allows us to have those delegates.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to item seven, approval of the minutes from the meeting held June 24th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? None. Motion carries. We did not have any persons wishing to address the board, correct? Moving on to item nine, approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
No discussion. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, none. Motion carries. Now, good news report, Deanne.
Good afternoon. Just a quick note for the good news report. We want to remind the public that they are invited to join us for the groundbreaking of Ben Rifele Middle School. You'll hear more about that school a little later in the board meeting. That groundbreaking will take place two weeks from today, July 22nd, at 4:30 PM. The site of that school is just northeast of the intersection of 41st Street and Highway 11 in southeastern Sioux Falls, and this is a public event where anyone and everyone is invited to join us. We had a great crowd at the Thomas Jefferson High School groundbreaking, and we hope the weather and the crowd is equally large for Ben Rifele. I wanted to update you on a unique opportunity that we have at this groundbreaking. We will have some special guests joining us. Two granddaughters of Ben Rifele, in addition to a few of his nieces and nephews, will be in attendance. Shortly after the committee selected Senator Rifele to represent the name of that school, Cynthia had put us in touch with a couple of family members. So since that time, I've been in direct conversation with them, providing them with email updates. Just had a delightful phone call with one of the granddaughters last week. They will be traveling here from Wyoming, Colorado, and the state of Washington to join us for that groundbreaking. They are honored to have their grandfather and uncle represented in such a way and are looking forward to being here. They will have a few moments at the groundbreaking to share some of his commitment and passion for education, so I think it will add an additional flair to our already exciting groundbreaking event. We'll also be meeting with the family that morning to learn a little bit more about their grandfather and uncle and continuing those conversations. Specifically, they asked me to reach out to the Rosebud Sioux Tribe leadership to make sure that those folks who serve on that board were also invited, and so we have extended that invitation. And at this time, I'm uncertain if anybody will be able to join us. However, that invitation has been made, and they too were grateful to receive a personal invitation. So we would just like to put emphasis on this event as it will have a descendants of the man for which the building will be named, and invite the public to join us again on Monday, July 22nd, at 4:30 PM. And the location is just northeast of the intersection of 41st Street and Highway 11 in eastern Sioux Falls, just east of Veterans Parkway there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deanne. And prior to that groundbreaking, we will be having our work session as a school board, starting at 1 o'clock here at IPC, just as a heads up for the community if any interest in that. Now we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Oh, sorry, I skipped one. Number 11, conflicts of interest. I had something written beside it, so I skipped right over it. We have three conflicts of interest presented to us. Do I have an approval of those conflicts of interest?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the conflicts and interests approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Seeing none. We have approved those conflicts of interest. Now we'll move to the approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Seeing none. The consent agenda is approved. Now we move on to the reports of the superintendent, and we have Dr. Boyson here.
That's right. Thank you. I'm sitting in for Dr. Maher tonight, as he is in Washington DC, as representing our state at national delegation. Tonight, we have three reports. The first one comes to us from Todd Bieck, from Business Manager, and it's the adoption of the FY20 budget and certification of the levies to the county auditors.
Thank you. In your board materials, you have all the information. Just a quick summary, the school board held a public work session on April 8th to review the program budgets as presented by the administration. That was April 3rd. On April 8th, 2019, a public hearing on the district's FY20 budget was held. Several people in attendance spoke about different programs within the budget. The school board granted tentative approval of the budget at its meeting held April 8th. Since the tentative approval, there's been one change to the capital outlay fund budget to reduce capital outlay expenditures in the information and technology services budget by $504,000, and that's because the high school replacement Chromebooks were received in June, and so that ITF staff could begin deploying them to the appropriate schools. So we supplemented their budget last year and then reduced it this year. You know, it's just a matter of spending the money at the end of June or the beginning of July. That is the only change that the administration has recommended, so we would ask that you approve the FY20 budget as presented and certify the levies to the Minnehaha and Lincoln County auditors. And you have the suggested motion attached.
Thank you, Todd. Do we have a motion?
I would just like to make a separate motion as far as the budget is concerned, and I would like to make a motion to increase the middle school instruction budget by $109,000 to reinstate the CTE EAs that were part of the original budget proposal.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
I guess for me personally, I feel like this is an important part of our curriculum, and it's a safety concern, it's a quality of education concern as well. And I would like to look and see if there's a way that in the future we could try to find additional funds, either through a private donor or some corporate or private businesses here in Sioux Falls that work in those same types of trades that we're trying to instill the interest in those kids to see if we can get those covered. This is for five EAs and at one at each school. And from what I personally saw, I felt like they were really a value add to the classroom for the students. And I want, as we look at workforce development, I want kids to be interested and exposed to as many of those types of things as possible and have a quality experience so that as they get into high school, we can fill those seats at CTE because they've generated an interest early on. So I would like to see us for the next year keep this and look for ways actively to try to find that money to replace it from some of our great partnerships that we have within our community.
Further discussion?
I just would agree with Carly on that. After witnessing that, I just feel like the hands-on would be lost without the EA involvement in the classroom. It'd be very hard with the classes of the size they are to do those hands-on projects as high quality as we've set for them. And middle school, I think, is truly the age we want to get them to see what it is to be involved in these CTE courses so that when they get to the high school level, they have some hope and thoughts of what they want to do in the future.
I think it's a great opportunity, maybe for a corporate sponsor. We have some great support with our CTE Academy, and, you know, hopefully we could find something, some support within our own corporations here to help support this. Yeah, they do feed into the CTE, so.
It'd be great to see if our Sioux Falls Education Foundation Director, as well as with the new STI Foundation Director, maybe could work together to do something to help with the funding on that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion ended. All those in favor with the motion for adding $109,000 back into the middle school instructional budget? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I have a second motion, and it's to increase the committed funds for the eight Title I schools for second grade SIPs program at the same schools that we already have a budget for the first grade SIPs program and to make the necessary revenue transfer from the capital outlay funds. And we heard a great report from Dr. Boyson on the SIPs program and what it had done for the first grade, and our concern was with both summer slide and not continuing those students in it so that by third grade, they're at leading level and within our strategic plan. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we clarify the dollar amount?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's $70,000 per school for eight schools, so it'd be $560,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Todd.
No problem.
I would agree. I think that the early results have shown to be very promising, and I would love to see those kids get another year's worth of that engagement and that more, not one-on-one necessarily, but smaller group using those new techniques and those new strategies that those teachers have learned. And so by giving them one more year in second grade, I think that will really be setting them up to be successful long-term and see those results when they get to that third grade level. And the earlier we can catch them and intervene, the more successful they're going to be long-term. So I think it's a great investment, and, you know, obviously we'll watch closely those results over the course of this next year to make sure that those continue, but I feel like the early results are very promising.
Further discussion?
I agree with the SIPs, how the success we had, and we finally have found something now that's working. Let's double down on it in these schools, the Title I schools, to make sure that we can give the best result for these children in those schools.
Let's have a vote. All those in favor with the motion to add the $560,000 for eight more second grade SIPs signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And I know hiring and filling these positions might be a concern since we're in July already and school's starting. So I know the district will use their best efforts to hire these positions and not just fill them, and we understand that if they're not able to at that point, but if we are able to fill those to get the best quality we can. Thank you. Okay.
So we'll need a motion for the whole budget now?
For the whole budget now. Now that we have those two amendments, any other motions or amendments? Seeing none. Motion to adopt the fiscal 20 budget and certification of levies to county auditors.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, our second report tonight comes from Todd Bieck for the Finance Action Network.
Thank you. At the direction of the school board during the FY20 budget hearing and tentative approval, the Finance Action Network, otherwise known as FAN, was called together and met on April 23rd, 2019. The purpose of the meeting was to study the $7.5 million opt-out expiring in 2022 and make a recommendation to the school board about whether to continue it and if so, at what funding level. In addition to Dr. Maher and myself and Doug Morrison, the Director of Research, Innovation, and Accountability, FAN was comprised of Sarah Andrews from Shoneman's, Jason Ball from the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, Keith Severson from Ida Bailey, Bob Timian from Ramcoata Companies, and Becky Witrock from Geotech. After studying the district's finances, benchmarking it against other South Dakota districts and its national peers, and projecting future fund balances based on various scenarios, FAN concluded that the opt-out is a critical component of the Sioux Falls School District budget. The opt-out enables the school district to both deliver its current level of programming, but also provide some risk mitigation toward inadequate funding from the state and other sources of revenue. The district fund balance is at its lowest point in 25 years and can't be relied upon to balance the budget in the future. Not replacing the expiring $7.5 million opt-out would be catastrophic to the school district. The school district has been fiscally conservative and only uses the portion of the opt-out critical to the district's needs. A 10-year target amount of $15 million in opt-out capacity is reasonable in order to maintain the opt-out used at a constant 5.2% of the budget and also maintain a 2% contingency for the district, meaning we would only access that additional 2% if it was absolutely necessary. And a laddering approach, i.e. opt-out for overlapping smaller amounts every year instead of one or two large amounts every five-plus years to the opt-out has some merits as it would allow the district to react on an annual basis to changes in need. Based on the input from FAN and school board members received during the June 5th, 2019 work session to discuss financing/opt-out strategies, the administration is recommending opting out in 2019 for taxes payable in 2020 for $1.5 million for 10 years. This opt-out will have no bearing on property taxes in 2020 as it is meant to be a partial replacement of the $7.5 million expiring in 2022 and will not be levied in 2020. There will be no additional opt-out recommended. If the board also opts out for $1.5 million in 2021 and in 2022, the district will have $9.5 million of opt-out funds available to it in 2022, which is in line with the five-year plan. So based on that, we're asking the board to approve the following resolution, and I'll read it. "The governing board of the Sioux Falls School District 49-5 does state that the above said board is unable to operate under the tax limitation measure currently in statute. We therefore opt out of such tax limitation in the amount of $1.5 million starting with calendar year 2019, taxes payable in calendar year 2020. This opt-out will be for 10 years, which will be through taxes payable in calendar year 2029. This action has been taken by the board and approved by at least two-thirds of the vote. This decision may be referred to a vote of the people upon a petition signed by at least 5% of the registered voters in the district and filed with the governing body within 20 days of the first publication of this decision. Unless this action is referred to a vote from the people and reversed by such vote, this resolution authorizes the county auditors to spread an excess levy to raise tax dollars in the above stated amount."
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the stated motion from Business Manager Bieck?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think, I just, I think we have one member of the FAN network here that, not district employees, so thank you for your time and work on this. We certainly appreciate your work and the FAN and just over the last 10 years or so that we've gone to them to seek some advice, financial advice, so thank you for doing that. And I think this is, without the state providing us sufficient funds, I think this is the only way we can do, only thing we can do to keep up our standards and the education we provide our kids in our district, so I support this.
I reiterate the thanks to everyone who's served on this. I think this is a great plan because it meets transparency with the public because every year they have a right to come back and say, once we're laddering this, to come and say, nope, we don't like it, that's too much, or, you know, you need to change this process in doing that.
in doing that. Yet it provides long-term financial stability to us as a district, so thank you for offering this plan and the time involved in it. Seeing no further discussion, a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, our third report tonight comes from the Director of Operational Services, Jeff Kreider, capital improvement plan and update and award bid for the new middle school. Mr. Kreider.
The primary part of the report is Ben Rifele Middle School, and we received bids on June 27th, and they were very favorable, so it's great. This is kind of a rendering. We took the architect's piece and put it up there for you, but the project will construct the middle school on a 23-acre site. And the 23-acre site is sown, and it'll show you how the building's going to sit on that site. It's on a corner. I think Deanne stole all my thunder, but the spot, but the horizontal, the bottom horizontal is 41st Street, and the vertical that you see on the right of the sheet is Faith Avenue. There's a church right to the right. We've been working with them, and they'll help share that cost of Faith Avenue. So you can kind of see the proximity, and Veterans Parkway is probably a quarter mile to the left of that site. The facility will be about 190,000 square feet, and that's the first floor of it as it sits on that site, and it's going to be built for approximately 1,000 students. The project is a planned reuse of George McGovern Middle School, and we did meet with staff and folks about what's good about George McGovern, what's good about Memorial, and we actually took auditorium of McGovern and, oops, you can see where that sits. So we actually took George McGovern's or Memorial's auditorium, which is right here, and put that in this plan and the classroom space on the very top. That puts five additional classrooms on there for special ed cluster program for this site. So those were the changes. There were several other minor changes. We enclosed a few of the houses for noise, you know, as they go to lunch, and tried to address all the issues that came up with, and we did the same thing when we did George McGovern. So it's kind of a progression, and hopefully this will be the perfect one when we get Plan construction is to begin immediately. We have a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday pending the vote tonight, and we hope that be completed by June 1st, 2021 for a fall of '21 opening. And Fegan Construction submitted the low base bid. There was eight bids submitted, and Fegan was the low bidder. I have to tell you, the second low bidder is only like $40,000, $40,000 difference, so very tight bids. And the highest bidder was about $3.3 million above, which is only 10% swing. That's pretty tight for the bid market. They submitted the low base bid and the recommended alternates, and their recommended alternates are as follows. Number two is Faith Avenue Construction. Those two are, the first two were put in place because there's cost sharing involved, so we wanted to break out that number in the bid process. And Faith Avenue Construction will be shared with the church next door. Then there's alternate number three is 41st Street and North Lane Construction, and that's working with the city on that. They reduced our assessed value to cover the cost of that, and I think you acted on that agreement, I might, just recently, for that process, last board meeting. Number four is cement and subgrade. The soils are a little, not the best out there, so we'd had to do a deep gravel section of that. But what we're finding is there's more contractors doing the cement stabilization and takes some of the unknowns out, so if you get really soft spots, these will bridge it. And we're finding that this is, it has been a lot more expensive than the gravel, but that's why we put this in, so there's a little cost saving involved here. And we're doing this out at Southeast Tech and at Annie Selvin, it was all this summer. So, and we did one about five years ago at Southeast Tech, and it really has held up really well, so it's a good process. Number five is some additional sod around the inside of the sidewalk to the building. And then number seven is upgrade the quality of floor tile in the corridors of the building. So the base bid with recommended alternates brings the total low bid to $31,284,000. So when you look at this, the bids compared to where we're at with the overall cost, we are approximately $3.3 million, or $3,350,000 below budget. So, and that's even without putting inflation numbers on that, so even a little better. So it's a good position to be in, and it's part of the capital bond, and we'll go through a little detail more in the board work session of where we're at overall. But this is the final bid of the first year of that CIP. So that puts us about $1.10 million of bid within the program, so, and we're to the good, so it's a good place to be. So with that, I recommend approval of Fegan Construction with a low base bid and alternates of $31,284,000 for the construction of Ben Rifele.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Good place to be, starting off already under, and we're a little under on the high school too, so.
Yep, we're a little, I always say is, we still have all the furnishings and all those pieces to go, and now we're moving into some of the little more tricky projects, the renovations and additions. So those are, you know, where you start seeing if there's any, you know, hidden things.
I think when you look at the construction market in Sioux Falls, it's very busy, you know.
Very busy.
People aren't looking, they're not out looking for work necessarily. People are looking to have them come to their house and do the work or come to their business, and so it's good that even when they're in high demand, we can still come in under budget and still be very responsible with the money that we got approved for this.
The project of this size, you know, all the best contractors bid this, I think we'd have been happy with any of the eight.
Yeah.
So we were in a pretty good position of the bids that we received.
And feeling good about timeline, the winning bid.
We need to get going.
Yeah.
It's going to be tight. We're hoping for a late fall.
Yeah.
Because this is a masonry-type construction, so get the foundations in so we can do, you know, temporary shelters so they can bid or build throughout the year, so.
And as a parent of a middle schooler where there isn't good access to drop off your kids, this one looks a lot better, so I'm glad to see that we have that.
We'll be separating buses. We also have a special ed drop-off on Faith Avenue that we've constructed, so there'll be three points of drop-off access, so.
Thank you. Any other further discussion questions? Seeing none. We have the motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 14, we have the second reading of the Sioux Falls School District Policies/Regulations on Policy BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings. Do you have a motion?
Go ahead.
So we first talked about this policy in May, or June, rather, and we updated the language to match the current practice, so I move to recommend the second reading of BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Before we adjourn, I'm just going to say I'm going to penalize myself for snacks and drinks at our long work session for my phone going off. My ringer was actually off, but my watch wasn't, so I apologize for the distraction during Todd's report, so I am in charge of those for our work session, so thank you. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.